Started, it's 1:02. This is a work session of the Board of County Commissioners. Today, we'll have an update from our Public Health Director and Dr. Lisa Zwierlinger from Rocky Mountain Family Practice in regards to the COVID-19 pandemic, followed by a presentation from our Workforce Center around our unemployment statistics. So with that, Colleen and Dr. Lisa, I am going to hand it over to you to get started. Oops, sorry. Guys, we will unmute you. Sorry. Just one second here. Because of our meeting being crashed yesterday a little bit, we had to do a little bit of some measures to unmute everyone here. Okay, so you should be unmuted if you can mute yourself right now. Colleen and Lisa can be...
Good.
Yeah, I think we're in. I think we're in. So yes, happy Tuesday. And as most of you know, the Governor has come out with a new public health order. It's an extension on the safer at home and includes now, and I want to make sure I'm going to say it right, if I have it right in front of me. It's expanded the safer at home and it's now included the vast great outdoors. So basically, our Governor has recognized the amazingness of where we live and the fact that folks are moving about, but hopefully utilizing outdoor recreation spaces and how to do it well and safely. So he's kind of expanded on that. He has loosened up some of the restrictions around some of the things that were closed. So as of this week, day camps could start to operate, sports camps could start to operate. There's just a lot. I'm trying to think. I have them all in front of me. And I'm trying to figure out what's most important. I think we still remain in group sizes no larger than 10. There's some exceptions. Yeah, in the sense of if there's going to be team events, that's up to 25 outside in an organized team event. But otherwise, it's still groups of 10 at this point in time. I think that's a handy piece. The piece that keeps being emphasized is we're talking about our social distancing practices. I think people are like, oh, yeah, yeah, we get it, we get it. But the reality is actually mobility right now. They have the ability to figure out if folks are moving between places. And since the safer at home order came into play in early May, people are moving. That happens, that just increases the chances and increases the possibility of the infection rate increasing. And what we're trying to do is trying to stay below a threshold across the state in the safer at home category, which allows folks obviously to go to work, recreate locally as much as possible. And with the recommendation of those folks that are over 60 and/or 65, there's some debate on that, but I'll just say both ages. And anyone that might have been compromised in any way is still, staying in the home is still the safest place for those folks and to continue in that way. Because those are also, that age group is also where the most hospitalizations are happening across the state. So as you know, the big picture is let's try to keep moving in a responsible way, very slowly moving forward. Everything, all the actions that we have today, we don't know what that is until about 13 days later. That's kind of the time cycle between infection rate and hospitalization rate. So it's about 13 days. And that's kind of why Lisa is looking at this data week after week and trying to see where recognizing that people are gathering. So we do ask that if that is happening, that you're still kind of following those four things six feet apart, wearing a face covering in public, washing your hands and/or using hand sanitizer. And if you're sick, please don't leave your house in that respect so you don't infect others regardless of what it is. So that's where we're at is public health. We continue to be able to contact trace all of the cases that have come in. Like I said, we work very closely to look at the data and what's happening. We feel confident that we're still able to keep slowly reopening. And I do remember the big one that happened this week as well was short-term rentals did open on June 1st. And there is some guidance for some of the things that we'll have an opportunity to open here in the next week or so. So that's where we're at with public health. We continue to be in that monitor and surveillance mode, if you will, and just processing information and making sure that we're in alignment with the Governor's orders. We did put in a variance request this past weekend as we were unsure of exactly what the Governor would come forward with this week. We wanted to ensure some of the businesses or things that are just not quite captured in that public health order were something that's unique to Lake County. So we did submit that variance for some other pieces that truly aren't captured. And we'll let you know what that update is when that comes in. So Lisa, would you like to share the data or where we're at?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I think Kayla, you need to enable me to share my screen.
Give me just a second, Lisa.
Yes, ma'am. Let's see here. Hold on, just a second here.
It looks like we should be able to now.
Yeah. You want to try, Lisa?
Yep, I'm on it.
Okay.
All right. Can everybody see that?
Yeah.
Excellent. Okay. All righty. So as we've done in weeks past, here is the state data from Colorado. And the interesting thing about this week is we've seen our first increase in positive cases of the week. And so there's been this lovely downtrend since our peak in Colorado. But you can see here, this line is just a little bit higher than that line. And so we have seen now more cases over the past week than we have in the previous three weeks. If you look at the slope of the curve, as we've talked about, here we are with some more cases in the recent weeks than we did when we saw this flattening of the curve here. Hospitalization data looks great. It's down. So if you look, overall hospitalizations are about 70 less than they were this time last week. So although more positive tests are occurring, as Colleen mentioned, it takes a couple of weeks for people with COVID to get really sick, to have to be hospitalized, if not something that happens immediately. I can explain why, if that's important to anyone. But the overall hospitalization rate continues to decline, meaning that Denver is wide open and I'm still able to accept our patients without hesitation. The death rates, we thought that there was a day here in May where there actually were no deaths, but that was a late reporting. So unfortunately, we continue to have deaths every day of COVID in the state of Colorado. Lake County shows that we've had a second spike. So we had our initial peak here in mid-April. And then this past week, we are having another peak that has come. And again, these peaks are small, right? These are single numbers. And so there's four cases that we found on one day as opposed to the five that we saw on our peak in mid-April. But it is a drastic change. And you can see from times where we just had one case here and there, we are now seeing several cases again per day. If you look at the overall cumulative graph, we had that lovely flattening of the curve there for almost a month where we had no positive cases. But since we have done the now safer at home, people are moving around, you can see that there is a significant upslope in the curve again. And we are seeing multiple positive cases, as I said, per week now. I was asked at our last meeting, last meeting I was at, I can't recall which one, but if I am separating out tourists from locals. And after some careful consideration, I've decided not to do that because I don't want our community to label the good ones and the bad ones. But I can tell you with confidence that this number is mixed and it is more locals than it is tourists. Hospitalization rates, we have not had a hospitalization since the end of April for COVID-19. So our hospital is poised and ready to take them, keeping in mind that we have kept almost all of our hospitalized patients for COVID with just two exceptions. And every line here represents a patient. So the majority of people that needed hospitalization, we were able to keep here in Lake County. And we are ready and able to take more of those patients. This number is interesting as compared to the previous several weeks. We had decreases in this number. The last week, if you recall, was 9%. And so now we're up to 11. So that speaks to more virus circulating. Remember, this is the PCR RNA. We did have a cluster of cases with a family gathering, greater than 10 folks, by the way, that did lead to this. So Colleen can certainly talk a little bit more about what an outbreak is in a certain population, but this does represent that cluster of cases. And then our IgG data, although the rate with which we're doing new testing has declined, it's still that 3%. So we are not making much headway on natural infection antibody production. So unfortunately, we are still, as we initially thought, going to need to wait for that vaccine in order to get these large numbers of 60%. Still no deaths in Lake County. And gosh, I hope I continue to show this slide. And then I added one other one, which are the five phases for roadmapping, which Colleen has talked about really a lot. But I just wanted to draw our attention that we no longer meet criteria number one, a sustained decrease in cases for at least 14 days. Unfortunately, with the last week's data, we are now seeing a significant uptick in cases. And we no longer meet the first criteria set about by the Colorado Department of Public Health in order to succeed with opening. So that's the data. Who has questions?
This is Kayla. I don't know that I so much have a question on the data as I have a question about the variance process for Colleen. Can you hear me, Colleen? Oh, I think you're muted. Wait, wait. Ame, can you help Colleen unmute? I can't.
Okay, I think we're there.
Okay, yay.
Sorry, I dropped off video for a few minutes so I could finish my lunch.
I had a question yesterday about what are the consequences of not applying for the variance process and opening anyways other than the public health emergency? And I don't know the answer to that. And I'm wondering if you could, aside from the ethical standpoint of us as leadership and the preservation of human life, what are the consequences from the state if we said, hey, we're just not going to follow this anymore and we're just going to be done? What would be the consequences?
I got it. Sorry. Thank you for rephrasing it because I don't think I understood the first time. So basically, as you know, public health is funded almost 33% from grants that come down from the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. So the consequences could be, first of all, besides, well, first of all, I could lose all my funding, right? Second of all, and probably the most important piece, is that we could see like an increase of disease spread, transmission. And we don't have the ability or the capacity to kind of keep up with and maintain and then possibly see deaths related to that. So obviously, I know you're pretty set up, but that's our normal concern, right? Like my position, my job is public health and safety, prevention, is promoting what we need to do in that respect. And so the big piece is that we could lose funding. So all of our retail food establishments are licensed through the state. So they would be required to close at that point in time because we wouldn't be able to license them. Basically, it would be not only affecting public health, but it would be a shutdown across businesses that we license. That also includes building. Public Health currently does all of the subject permitting for all of the new construction that's going out there. And if we have our funding cut, then we don't have the ability to help assist in that process either. So it's a multifaceted piece as far as just the funding and other functions that we serve in this community, that we would no longer be able to serve. And so economically, that can be devastating, as we can imagine. And Lisa, it looks like you want to add something.
Yeah, I can't tell you what that would look like as well with the loss of life. You know, there are two phases of death with COVID. So the first one is you die of a disease, which obviously is not preventable. But the second one is you die because of lack of resources. And we saw that in New York a lot, where they just ran out of equipment. They didn't have the hospital beds, they didn't have the nursing staff, they didn't have anybody to take care of them, and they just died. And so that would happen also if we missed the second tick on that list of five, where we overwhelmed our healthcare system.
Thank you. I am not asking that question because I'm considering taking that route. I'm merely asking that question so that when people are asking, I know how to articulate that and know how to communicate what the consequences are and why, aside from our ethical responsibility as leaderships to preserve human life, what those other consequences are. And I just wanted to be able to articulate that really well. So thank you for that information. I appreciate it.
Yeah, and I think, Kayla, it's important, and I think this has been the message that we're pushing out, is people recognizing that we're all in this together, that each of our actions has an impact across the whole entire community. And so while I understand the sacrifices and things that are being asked, but the more that we can kind of maintain the safer at home piece, the more that the folks that truly want to get back to what they consider is more normal on the road if we can continue to social distance well. It doesn't mean you can't hang out with two folks in an open space, six feet apart with a mask on, kind of thing. It's just really taking those pieces into consideration.
Well, and you also have to remember too, the data speaks for itself. I mean, we had a family that decided not to follow social distancing, to not wear face coverings, to not do what they knew they should be doing. They gathered in a very large group, and now they're all sick. So the data just speaks for itself. And I think that all you have to do is continue to resort to that, says the scientist in the room.
No, and I think that's super important. And we have to recognize too, how many folks have we seen around town, including ourselves, who are practicing all of these great pieces, all those four pieces that we continue to talk about in our little logo? And even with that, we're seeing transmission spread. So the fact is, for so many of those folks who are doing all those four pieces, we're still seeing transmission spread. So we wanted to all of a sudden just say, you don't have to do any of these pieces because we recognize that that truly is what's allowing us to reopen, responsible reopening.
Great. Well, I really appreciate that information, and it helps me out a lot. So thank you so much for that. I don't have any other questions at this point. Commissioner Glenn or Commissioner Mutch, do you have any questions? Or does anybody from the audience have any questions as well for Dr. Lisa and Colleen?
I do. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. It's being scolded by IT. I just, along those lines, Colleen, how can we support, and I know we've got the PIO, we've got this information getting pushed out, but how can we support public health and our community behavior? You know, maybe trying to crack down or get a tighter grip with these businesses that are opening? I mean, specifically right now, in addition to what we're doing and reaching out and Main Street and working with the city and the recovery teams, is there anything that we can do to emphasize this for restaurant owners?
Yeah, no, I think that's a great question. So if anybody else has any ideas, I would be open to it as well. Obviously, we don't have the answer. I think the key is definitely modeling the way. When there's opportunity for education, and it's just like, hey, this is why, this is why. And I think too, it's validating that everyone feels in that respect of being picked on and people not understanding all the pieces when if you're only looking at from, I'm an owner of a business first, I'm a member of this community, and it's trying to reframe that and emphasize those pieces and how to be a responsible member of the community, whether you own a business or not, if you will. If there's anyone else who has any other ideas, I think that's great. Or there's something more that we can take on. It looks like Lisa has something as well. So.
So we lead by example. And certainly in my business, when people walk in without a face covering, I hand them one. And when they're reluctant to wear it, I explain how it's protecting me as the business owner and my staff and that it doesn't protect you as the customer, but it protects me. And I lead by example, and I never leave my house without my face covering on. And I think that people look towards us as people of authority. And when we are caught behaving not so well, people pay attention. And I have heard and I have seen leaders out in our community who are not following these guidelines. And so that's the first thing we have to do is we have to put on our face coverings. We have to not be shaking people's hands. We need to encourage. And when we see people who are not covering their faces, carry a couple extra face coverings in your pocket and hand them out. Make sure that you're being part of the solution and not part of the problem. And obviously, the last thing we want to do is have a confrontation. And so for example, in my business, when people come in and they refuse to wear their face coverings, I see them in their cars. I tell them that we just can't risk having them come into the building. And so I believe that there are ways that we can stand together as a community to make this happen. But we absolutely must lead by example, and you've got to put your face covering on.
I appreciate that very much, Dr. Lisa. Also, Colleen, what kind of heads up or process will we, what kind of information will we get if you want to take any steps back because of the data that's coming or the cases that hopefully do not increase? But should that happen, how do we plan to communicate? Has that been communicated with the businesses to understand, hey?
No, so, right. So in all honesty, even coming from the state down, the reality is that it's almost impossible for us to go backwards. So it's more of, hey, we're not going to go any further forward. So right now, when we think about our restaurants, they're at 50% capacity and/or 50 people max, whichever is smaller. So we're going to stay there. Like, it's not like we're going to fully shut down unless truly there's a violation. Like when I just think of, and it's not to pick on retail food, but the fact is that there's a licensing component to that. And if they're not in compliance with what's happening and they're filling their spaces with more than 50% and/or 50, whatever number is less, then obviously they're out of compliance and therefore there's a licensing piece there. But I think that piece is like, we can't open anything more. We can't go, hey, we're ready to increase the numbers in some of these occupants and spaces and where people are hanging out, as well as programming. So there might be some things within the county control that we might, depending on where we're seeing these clusters coming from, whether or not it's something that we have some input into versus what people are doing privately, on their own time, in their own space, if you will. So it still continues with education and recognizing, hey, we can keep moving forward. But I don't necessarily think there's a path backwards, in all honesty, right? I just, could you imagine, right? And anyone can weigh in on this, to try to be like, we shut everything down. I mean, truly, if we had a spike where I think everyone would recognize that we need to shut everything down, like it wouldn't necessarily... You know, Dr. Lisa said this, it's like, oh, my gosh, we just had 50 cases, three deaths in one week. Like, we need to cut back. Like, I think logically, we'll all hit that if we truly get to that point.
Colleen and Lisa, would there be any way for you to... Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Janine.
Well, if in the contact tracing piece, if there's any component that includes asking folks if they were aware of the protocols and if there's any information that you glean from that in terms of what would have helped either with messaging or with emphasis, if there's any takeaways that come out of that process?
So that's interesting that you ask that. Certainly, when I follow up with the positive patients, I ask them that. There are specifics that we could have gleaned from, what could we have done better next time? And the overall whelming, nothing was it, there was really nothing. I mean, this particular outbreak, they could have had a smaller group in the family gathering, I suppose. But most of the other cases that we've seen, it's just been kind of a random event. And that's the hard thing about this kind of infection, is that you get it from anywhere. It doesn't necessarily have to be from extremely close contact.
Lisa and Colleen, is there any way that you could participate on the first part of our economic recovery call on Thursday to give this update? I think it might be really important for that group to hear some of this update.
So is that at 3:30?
Yes.
Okay, I know that I can make it. And Lisa, if you can't, then obviously I feel comfortable presenting the data.
3:30? Yes, I could do 3:30. If someone could send me an invite, that'd be awesome.
Lisa, I can send a meeting invite to you with the Zoom information, the Zoom link.
Please, thank you.
And I would like that as well. Thank you.
Does anybody have any other additional questions for Lisa and Colleen while we're here with them? Nope. Commissioner Glenn, do you have anything for them?
I do not.
All right. All right. Thank you both so much for joining us today. I definitely appreciate your time and appreciate the update. It's really important for us to know. If nobody has any other questions for Lisa and Colleen, we'll let them... They're welcome to stay for our unemployment report, or you're welcome to step off. I don't know what your time looks like, and we want to be respectful of your time. And so with that, then we will hand it over to Jessica, who is our representative from our Workforce Center in our region. Ame, Jessica needs to be able to share her screen and unmute. If you could help me with that so she can give us our... There we go. Perfect. And unmute.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Okay, now we can hear you.
Lovely. Great. Well, thank you, Janine and Commissioners, for asking me to join you today. I am the Director of Workforce Development for Northwest Colorado. I cover a 10-county region that includes Lake County, although I live up in Steamboat Springs. I do have some unemployment information, some general economic information to share with you all. And then just kind of some key takeaways and points for you to be considering as you think about not only what's happening currently with respect to your workforce, but what might you anticipate coming down the pipe? What does the world look like going forward? This will... Hey, okay. So a few things that I'd like you to keep in mind before we jump into looking at some data. Lake County, as you all know, is heavily affected by what goes on in Summit and Eagle County. And so having a regional approach, I think, is always valuable. Of course, Lake is part of a region, is part of a state, is part of the country. But really, when we think about workforce ramifications, because roughly 20% of your outbound workers are headed to Summit and another 20% head to Eagle, we know that those two communities have an outsized influence on what goes on with respect to Lake County residents from a workforce standpoint. You know, one of the things that I've been encouraging folks to think about, and I sit on a lot of economic recovery task forces across a 10-county region. I'm on about six of them, is that there's a distinction that's important here between opening and also demand. And I think that this is really well reflected in what your health officials just had to share. You know, the initial impact that we saw to COVID via the employment was really about closures through public health orders. And so obviously, employers that were being shut down, the first thing they were doing was shutting their staff. But continued impacts are going to be the result of who can open and in what capacity, and who can't, and also demand. So opening is one thing, but demand is something else entirely, right? And that's a function of an overall feeling of safety. It has to do with people's certainty that I have enough money to cover what I need to cover. It has to do with security around, can I travel? Where can I go? Is it safe to be somewhere? And those are really big questions that are outside, I think, of the sphere of... You know, the county health order is pretty direct, right? You can open, you cannot open. But how safe people feel spending money or where they feel like they can be, and that's okay, is what is going to constitute demand. And that's a lot squishier and harder to put a pin on. But it's going to be really important as we think about what types of jobs will be available over time with respect to navigating COVID. So people are only going to be brought back to work if a business is open, obviously, and there's enough demand in an industry to bring workers back. The reality is that it's pretty unlikely that we're going to get back to pre-COVID employment levels for years, potentially more than a decade. And I say that because lots of folks might not realize, we just got back to pre-2008 recession employment last year. And that was 12 years after the 2008 recession. Unemployment levels were nowhere near in 2008 where they are right now with COVID. Now, granted, that was a very different set of economic circumstances. And so I think everyone's hopeful that recovery might go faster here. But this is going to have lingering impacts on unemployment and the ability of people to go to work for a long time. And so if we're not adequately preparing our county budgets and also our personal expectations around, this isn't just a rough summer or a rough six months or a rough, hopefully, until a vaccine comes out in another year and a half or two years, this is going to take quite some time to recover. Obviously, markets don't like uncertainty. And so having a lot of volatility... And so having a lot of volatility and a lot of up and down is going to create ripple effects apart from just, you know, the immediate effects of closures or outbreaks of COVID-19. And then the other thing I think that is really important to understand here is that tourism-driven economies are having outsized effects compared to places that are not so heavily driven by tourism. Now, we're going to look at Lake County's base industry makeup. And you'll actually see that tourism represents about 20% of the revenue that comes into Lake County. But as I mentioned, a lot of your residents are employed in Summit County and Eagle County, where a much higher percentage of what goes on there is tourism-driven. So tourism-based communities are probably likely to see outmigration of residents who cannot replace the jobs that they lost. I just want to point out here, consumer spending in Colorado on entertainment and recreation overall is down 62% since January. And this is as of the middle of May, and down 57% for restaurants and hotels. So quite a significant decrease in spending around the state. Okay, so just some quick numbers here for Lake County. This is looking at for 2019. So, you know, pre-COVID information here. Overall population of the county, just shy of 8,000 folks. Lake County was home to 2,700 jobs, give or take. Again, these jobs may or may not have been filled by residents. These are just jobs that existed in the community. And then the median household income here at just shy of $47,000 a year, quite a bit lower than both the state and the national average. This colorful bar chart is where those 2,700 jobs are and what supersector, what kind of grouping of industry has those jobs. So you can see, you know, it looks like about a third of those jobs are in leisure and hospitality. That's the orange in the middle. The bright red is education and health services. And that's going to include positions at Colorado Mountain College and your local school district and your hospitals. And then the other larger bar there is yellow, and that's public administration. So, you know, think government jobs. So, you know, a decent mix there, but quite a, quite a number of jobs in leisure and hospitality and also education and health. Education and health have been kind of uniquely impacted here because we've seen a lot of elective medical procedures get canceled or postponed. So we have seen layoffs in health industry in particular. And then in education, as we know, is looking at potential significant budget cuts and/or decreased enrollments for higher education. And so, you know, those jobs are going to be heavily impacted going forward. So Lake County, as you all know, is kind of historically considered a bit of a bedroom community. This is showing you commuter patterns. So those, that Venn diagram on the left, that dark green circle is the number of people who work in Lake County but are residents of another county. So a little over 500 folks. The very large light green circle is Lake County residents who work outside of Lake County. And that's about 3,500 of your residents. This is 2017 data. It's the most recent commuter data we have. But no reason to believe that 2019 would have been too incredibly different than 2017. And then the overlap there, a little over, under 1,000 folks, both live and work inside of Lake County. So you can see here on the right, where are your residents going to work? And this is where I said it's important to understand to a degree what's happening in Eagle and Summit County because, you know, of your working population that is leaving, about 20% of them are going to Eagle County and another 20% are going to Summit County. Significantly smaller percentages going to front-range communities. So, you know, there's a really important correlation here between what happens in Eagle and Summit and what goes on in Lake because your residents are their workers, right? This is a base industry mapping. And what base industry represents is just revenue that comes into your county. Where does it come from? So the nice thing about Lake County is that your base industry pie chart looks like a, like a Trivial Pursuit pie chart, right, where you have like different color and somewhat equally sized pieces. From an economic standpoint, that's usually considered a good thing. It means that your economic portfolio is diversified, which is what you want, right? You don't want all the eggs in one proverbial basket. So in Lake County here, things are pretty evenly distributed. In an ideal scenario, you see a large share of money that comes into a county or a community in the goods-producing sectors. So that would be manufacturing, agriculture and mining. Sorry, was there a question? As you all know, not a lot of manufacturing and agriculture in Lake County, but you do have a lot of mining there with the Climax Mine. So about 18% of the revenue that comes into Lake County is coming through mining. Unfortunately, Climax is also having impacts due to global market prices going down. And they let go about 30 workers through the end of the month of April. So, you know, some knock-on effects there because of what's going on with global markets due to COVID. About 20% of the revenue coming in is from tourism. So that's going to be a pretty volatile sector for Lake County. About 21% is spending of people over the age of 65. So, you know, a fair amount of retirees spending, could be second homeowners. The regional services is kind of a catch-all bucket. That would be the hospital. It would be CMC up at Timberline. It would be spending, you know, grocery stores or other establishments inside the community. And then the commuter piece is spending that somebody would go, let's say, for example, they make their paycheck in Eagle and they come home and spend it in Lake County. That's the percentage of commuter spending as a share of your overall revenue profile for the county. So, you know, a pretty even mix there, but some key pieces that are going to be pretty vulnerable right now due to COVID-19. So taking a look at your unemployment information, on the left here is showing you the official unemployment rate. I try to make it clear that people receiving unemployment insurance and the unemployment rate actually don't have any obvious relationship to each other. Unemployment rate, we're used to hearing reported in the news every month. And the way that that rate is determined is actually through a survey of 60,000 US households. People who respond to that survey are asked, are you able and available to go to work? And have you actively looked for work inside of the last four weeks? The people that answer yes to that question become the numerator for the unemployment rate. Now, you'll note that neither one of those questions were, did you file a claim for unemployment? Are you receiving unemployment? So they're actually measuring two different things. So the official unemployment rate for Lake County for the month of April, which is the most recent data, was just shy of 17%. We also put February and March in here for comparison's sake. March isn't really telling you very much because that survey takes place over the first two weeks of the month. So you don't really see a lot of what was happening in March's unemployment rate, but boy, you sure see it when we get to April. So Lake County official unemployment rate, just shy of 17%. The state of Colorado's unemployment rate for the month of April was about 11%. It's not surprising that Lake County's rate is higher than the state's. That is really a result of the industries that were heavily impacted by COVID-19 and public health order closures were ones where you were very likely to have people working. So tourism, hospitality, retail, those kind of things. On the right-hand side, this is the rate that I, that we track within the workforce system. This is the percentage of people who had filed for some type of unemployment assistance. So for Lake County, that was about 1,000 people, give or take, through early, middle of May. Represented about 20% of Lake County's workforce had filed for some type of unemployment assistance with the state by the middle of May. And so a little bit higher than the official unemployment rate, but then again, you know, remember, those are measuring two different things. So hopefully that's not too confusing. But what we know from this is that about, you know, at a minimum, one in five, you know, working residents in Lake County has been impacted by COVID-19 closures or layoffs, the reduction in hours. This is giving you a little bit more information about where the unemployment claims coming from? What industry do they come from? We're only able to see this data in your workforce area, which for Lake County, you're part of the rural resort region, which is actually probably helpful given how diffuse your workforce is in terms of leaving the county to go work elsewhere. So rural resort is Summit, Lake, Eagle, Pittkin and Garfield Counties combined. We can see that almost 50% of the unemployment claims out of those five counties were coming out of leisure and hospitality businesses. And then a little over 10% out of trade and transportation, a little over 10% out of education and health services. So, you know, those are predominantly what's driving the unemployment claims in the region. And I want to share with you, I think the next graph here is going to show you the same information for Eagle and Summit Counties, just because they are employing a significant percentage of Lake County residents. I wanted to give you the same data for them very quickly. So same colorful bar chart, the orange is leisure and hospitality jobs on the left. The top bar is Eagle, the bottom bar is Summit. So a little over 50% of the jobs in those counties are in leisure and hospitality, so quite a significant percentage. On the right-hand side, you can see their official unemployment rate. The official unemployment rate is about 23%, oh, I'm sorry, the official unemployment rate is a little over 20% in both Eagle and Summit Counties. The percentage of their workforce that had filed a claim for unemployment insurance is around 25%, a little bit higher than that. So looks similar to Lake County in terms of the official rate being, you know, a hair lower than the percentage of people who had filed claims, which is a little bit more recent data. So you can see, you know, they're in a, they're in a little bit of a worse bucket, but kind of a similar theme in your neighboring communities as you're seeing in Lake County. This is where things look very different for Eagle and Summit Counties. And I think is going to tie to how likely and how quickly Lake County residents that are employed in Eagle or Summit are going to be able to get back to work. This is the same base industry analysis that I showed you all, where yours looks like a nice little Trivial Pursuit pie, where each piece of, you know, each color piece of the pie is roughly the same size. You can see in Eagle, about 60% of the money coming into Eagle County is through tourism. And in Summit County, it's almost 70%, which is just basically to say that they are wholly and entirely dependent on tourism-driven revenue. And so as long as there is reduction to tourism, whether that is the result of a statewide or a local public health order, or it's reduced demand because people don't necessarily feel safe, confident or comfortable in traveling, those communities are going to be particularly hard-hit because it's, you know, an overwhelming majority of the revenue in the county is dependent upon tourism. So important to keep in mind as you think about what's impacting Lake County residents is seeing a little bit of this data for Summit and Eagle, I think, is helpful. Kind of the, you know, some points to think about as moving towards recovery. And I appreciated, I think, in the doctor's slides, you know, they're in the, sort of trying to stabilize, you know, recovery is dependent upon a widely utilized vaccination. So we are a ways away from that. But, you know, just in your own economic planning as a community, knowing how much your local economy depends upon tourism is going to be important. And, you know, if I skip down to the bottom bullet point, it's important not just for the summer. I know that, you know, the, a lot of the races and probably most of your community events have been canceled for Lake County and in Leadville. We need to be thinking about a significantly reduced winter season now. I, you know, would say that any community that has a lot of people employed by ski resorts that isn't considering the possibility that resorts might not be able to open next winter because of another outbreak or public health orders is not doing appropriate planning. I think we're all very hopeful that that's not the case. But I think that we would be fooling ourselves if we said it wasn't a possibility. So, you know, knowing that summer tourism might be a bit of a wash, I think that modeling that looks at winter tourism also being a bit of a wash is going to be very important. And understanding how many of your businesses and also your residents could sustain a full calendar year without tourism at its, you know, pre-COVID levels is going to be important. I think, you know, another element here to consider about, especially if you're all as elected officials, is what types of public services that you fund are receiving most of their funding from taxes on tourism-dependent activities. And then similarly, you know, looking at those knock-on effects. For example, the, I think, why I saw that the bollidum had been cut in half, had reduced production by about 50% at Climax. You know, you obviously have regional services that are funded through severance tax at the mine. Understanding what the impact is on your local services that are dependent upon those types of revenue streams and how to best manage potential reductions or just market volatility will also be important. Something else that I have been trying to draw focus attention to is to, to know that a lot of the federal stopgaps that were put into place are ending this month into next month. The two main ones there are the Paycheck Protection Program. Some, and I do believe, I don't know that it passed. I know that there was an intent to extend that time period that the loan was good for from eight weeks' worth of payroll out to 24 weeks of payroll, which would certainly help businesses. But there are a lot of employers that are anticipating those loans to be exhausted about now, month of June. And then the other thing that's important to keep in mind is that folks that are receiving unemployment insurance right now are getting an added $600 a week tack on to their unemployment benefit. That goes away in the end of July. And it seems pretty clear that it's not going to get extended in any type of federal legislation. I think that it's reasonable to anticipate that there's a lot of jobs that will still be missing from the market by the end of July. And so what happens to those individuals when they see their unemployment benefit cut in half or more when that funding runs out? Okay. And then just very quickly, I wanted to highlight some of the things that the Workforce Center is doing or that we're able to offer. We are currently closed to the public. We're co-located, as you guys know, at the CMC campus. And as long as their campus is closed, our office will remain closed. That said, we are staffing the office. And so we have folks that are working remotely, but they are working Monday to Friday from 8:00 to 5:00, serving people over the phone, email, virtually, whatever they need. And we're able to do about, I would say, 90-plus percent of the work that we do virtually. So we haven't been too impacted in terms of the services that we can offer. Job search, I did want to mention, is normally a requirement of receiving unemployment. It was waived by an executive order of the governor. When the closures started happening, it has now been reinstated as of yesterday, June 1st. So everybody who had previously been receiving unemployment was not required to search for work. Now they are required to search for work unless they're job attached. So that's a shift. We can help people with work search. We can also help folks with resume writing, you know, doing interview skills, looking at what transferable skills they might have if they're needing or thinking about going to a different industry or a different occupation. We have, you know, a whole variety of services that we can provide with respect to looking for and preparing for a job. We do have other tools like assessments and vocational placers. Right now, because our offices closed, our computers aren't available to the public. But we probably have a way to facilitate assessments for folks that are needing those as part of their job search strategy. Most of what the Workforce Center has been doing for these last couple of months is helping field unemployment insurance claims. We are not unemployment insurance, but we are part of the same state agency. And so we've been doing a lot of unemployment insurance support over the last couple of months. And we can continue to offer that to anyone who has questions about unemployment. We have been working also with businesses who are either trying to rehire or they rehired and now they're running out of PPP money, and so they're going to have to lay folks off again. And understanding what are their options with respect to staffing. So we're here to support businesses as well. And then, of course, any type of data or labor market information that we have, we're happy to put together in whatever package you feel is useful. The Labor Department, we don't do any type of economic forecasting or model prediction, but the Department of Local Affairs, the State Demographers Office, does. And so, you know, we would be happy to work with them if, you know, you would like some type of, you know, an array of models to consider as you think about your economic planning as a county. And that's, that's pretty much all that I had prepared, but I'm happy to answer any questions if there's any questions y'all have.
This is Commissioner Mudge, Jessica.
I'm wondering, thank you, Jessica. That was really helpful. Go ahead, Tara.
I, I, yeah, I just, thank you very much. And just want to make or reiterate some of those points of, you know, our commuter population and how reliant, of course, the relationship between Eagle, Summit and Lake County will be on many levels. And wondering, you know, I think in the way that we have kind of maybe perhaps better partnered, perhaps with Chiefy or South of us in talking about economic and tourism, sort of packaging and messaging, are there conversations or could you keep an ear out for ways since Lake County? I mean, we have this abundance of outdoor activity opportunities. You know, is, is there some way that we can be thinking about communicating that package with Eagle and Summit County in mind of visiting? And of course, we want people to shop locally here. You know, I mean, I don't know how silly it is to encourage, you know, locals in that messaging here to say, you know, and if you can't get it here, either shop online or, because the delivery and the taxes, you know, are likely to come back to our, our own county there. But yeah, just, just specifically curious if, if, if there's been kind of ideas shared on, you know, the outdoors, the physical climate and geography that we have in Lake? climate and geography that we have in Lake, and then some of that retail that depends on such visitation through Summit and Eagle County as well.
Yeah, I mean, I can say, and you raise a good point, because I know that Lake is not part of the cog that Summit and Eagle are a part of, and I know that you've participated, especially with that outdoor rec sector partnership with Upper Arkansas. You know, you got, geographically, you're in kind of an interesting reality, because you're kind of like straddling both worlds. In terms of your residents, though, where they work, overwhelmingly, they're represented by what goes on in Summit and Eagle County, which isn't surprising, right? Like, the tourism economy there is a behemoth compared to what Parker, Chafee, or even can offer, and so that's where a lot of the jobs are. I think right now, it's a really important time to be engaged in those dialogues around what does partnership look like? It's interesting, because just a few months ago, I was participating in that High Country Workforce Collaborative, where we were talking about the opposite problem, which is record-low unemployment that had gone on for years, and trying to work with Summit and Eagle on what was the possible solution there. And now we're just in, it's like a total 180 in such a short period of time. I know that both, particularly Eagle County, I think because they had cases earlier and maybe peaked a little bit earlier, they've been a little bit more on the ball in terms of their welcoming back second homeowners, trying to figure out what type of marketing and attraction they can offer to people with respect to outdoor rec. Summit County is probably a couple of weeks behind where Eagle County is, but I do think that it would probably make a lot of sense to think about what's a good collaborative message in a way that the region can benefit and not just one isolated county, especially knowing that, I mean, we're always all in it together, but you're really all together now. So I think that that's a good way to be thinking. I would be happy to help you connect with folks in economic development in those communities, although I know that obviously through your commissioner group, you can probably make those connections as well.
I'm curious, Jessica, this is Janine. Since you said that you're sitting on several different recovery teams, can you share any knowledge or wisdom or any processing that you think would be helpful for us and our recovery team, in addition to what you've already shared?
Yeah, I mean, a lot of the counties, they're doing the same thing that you were just talking about in terms of trying to get variances from the state to be a little bit more proactive about opening up communities to get people out. I can say, I think everybody is kind of on the same page or on the same trajectory in terms of what they're looking at and what they're trying to do. What I would say I'm not hearing a lot of, and I definitely appreciate that people have only so much bandwidth to go around, is I am not hearing a lot of real proactive planning about anticipating a reduced winter season. In talking with economists from the Department of Local Affairs, we've talked about reasonable community models should put it at at least a 30% reduction in tourism and tourism-associated revenue, all the way up to above 80%. I think most counties right now are very focused on trying to have the best summer that they could possibly have after an abrupt end to the last ski season and significant decreases in revenue just from the last couple of months. I don't see people being as proactive as I think that they should be in anticipating what's going to happen next winter season. So if I was going to encourage you all to kind of think in a direction that seems really obvious, but where others don't seem to be quite there yet, because they don't want to think about it, or they just don't have the bandwidth to deal with that on top of everything else, it would be to start doing some planning around what does that look like next year.
Jessica, can you explain what's happening with the unemployment fund? I had seen a news article about it being nearly depleted. Can you speak to that a little bit, or what happens when the fund becomes depleted, do you know?
Yeah, so right now, so the state trust fund is about to run out of money, so it will be bankrupt by the end of June. What that means from a practical standpoint, if you're somebody receiving unemployment, Colorado is going to have to get a loan from the federal government to continue to pay unemployment insurance claims. We can't just not pay claims. So the state will have to get a loan to continue to pay those claims, and that's the intent when that fund runs dry by the end of this month. From an employer's standpoint, something that is important to be aware of, so businesses typically, government not, right? So you guys, being county employees, it's different. Private sector businesses have to pay premiums for unemployment insurance. Most of that premium is held, just like you do for car insurance or any other insurance, most of that premium is held in an individual employer account, and a smaller percentage of it goes to feed that trust fund. When all of the COVID layoffs started happening, one of the provisions of the CARES Act was that unemployment claims would not have to come out of individual employer accounts because employers were laying off everyone all at once, they didn't have enough money to cover it. So the CARES Act said that all of the claims are going to come out of the state's trust fund, you don't have to pay it out of your individual employer account. And under normal circumstances, when you lay a bunch of people off, your premiums go up, just like if you get into a bunch of car accidents, your car insurance rates go up. That was also suspended on a kind of like an individual basis with the CARES Act, meaning if mom-and-pop company had to let go of 10 people, and XYZ Corp. let go of 300 people, they weren't going to see their premiums adjusted based off of how many people they had let go of, which is normally how it works, right? What is happening now, because the state of Colorado is going to have to take out a loan to pay people's unemployment insurance claims, the only way to pay back that loan is to increase premiums for everyone across the board. And so most businesses, right now, I think what I have heard, the highest rate I've heard is an 85% rate hike on unemployment insurance premiums. So employers are having to prepare to pay increased unemployment insurance premiums so that the state has a mechanism to pay back that federal loan. But for individuals that, so it's not good news for businesses, but for individuals that are receiving unemployment, they don't need to worry that they're not going to be able to continue to have their claim paid. The state will continue to pay claims as long as they're eligible. Hope that answers the question.
No, that definitely answered my question. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Is there anybody else that has any questions for Jessica at this point on the data that she had presented, or about unemployment and our economic picture with the data that was presented?
Jessica, this is Colleen Nielsen from Public Health. I so appreciate that information. I think that's so valuable, and once again, that recognition of how we're all impacted in different ways, and really kind of looking forward where, I mean, I think especially towards again, when you're talking about, like, people just aren't recognizing these consequences, if you will, that are happening in the next couple of months. And so I guess my question is, is there any way, either Public Health or other ways, that we can ensure that folks are understanding, and especially seeking jobs, or recognizing some of those jobs might not be there, and shifting, or what kind of advice would you have for us in that respect? I mean, in Public Health, obviously, we have the ability to push out information, but we do do a lot of working with folks and filling out applications, as far as both medical as well as for assistance. So if there's any kind of education or something that we should be pushing for people, like past, like this week, which I know people in crisis may not necessarily have that, but is there a bigger message we would be pushing? Sorry, that was long-winded.
No, that's such a thoughtful question, and I really appreciate with everything else on your plate that you have the capacity to think about that, too. No, I think that part of what is really good messaging from a county governance level is to try to bring together the economic information with the public health information to talk about it as one thing. Because I think that people hear the health stuff in one space, and I think it changes, right? There's variances, and new public health orders come out, and it's kind of week to week, and it's sort of like, wait, what am I supposed to do today? And are not thinking about how do we marry what we know about what this disease looks like, with some of the things that you guys just said at the beginning of this call, if there is another outbreak, or if we seek, even when you said, like, we're not qualified now for this next phase because our cases aren't going down anymore, that that has a direct correlation to economic impact in the community. And so I think from a leadership level, to the extent that you can talk about those two things together, I feel like it really helps people not compartmentalize, but see this as sort of one evolving ecosystem, that what's driving the availability of people to go to work, what kind of jobs are out there, businesses are able to keep people on or not, is a direct tie to what you're advising from a health standpoint in terms of keeping the community safe. And I think that the more we can start to talk about and see those two things symbiotic instead of in silos, I think that it helps, honestly. I know that for some folks initially, that might be a lot to process, but I think at the end of the day, the stronger we marry those two messages, the better the community is going to be able to be proactive. But it's a great question.
I agree, and I think, Colleen, to add on to that point, it will make our recovery efforts a lot smoother if we're looking at it as pushing out the recovery through the new norm with the public health orders, right? So I think being able to have your involvement on those recovery meetings at the beginning to give that update to say, here's what it means in public health, here's what it means for you in terms of recovery, so that those things are starting to blend together, and those roles are starting to overlap a little bit, it will make the anxiety within the business community kind of decrease a lot, I think, if we're able to have that overlap.
You know, I can appreciate that, Kayla. Like I said, if we want to make this a standing order, whether Lisa can make it or not on those Thursdays, I can commit that time to ensure that that is unified, and that's not overwhelming me as some other meetings drop off. Obviously, vocal is the priority, and if we feel that that is a better use of our time, and not necessarily doing, even though we're not doing them this week, like a Business Town Hall, where, hey, this is where we're going to give information, and when we're available to answer questions as well. And so we can talk more about that offline, but no, I do appreciate that. And like I said, and I'm comfortable sharing the data, it's not like we are living and breathing in this data, so if Lisa isn't available, obviously, I can make that happen every week as well.
That'd be great. Thank you so much, Colleen.
Jessica, this is Commissioner Mudge again. I think Lake County, it seems, has a really great opportunity, though everybody will be burdened with the challenges that this event will bring for an unknown amount of time. But we have our smaller Ski Cooper, not so reliant on the huge, huge crowd being drawn, and so being able to maybe manage that a bit better as far as maintaining our social distancing protocols and our health and safety, public health and safety, our Nordic winter biking, and just thinking winter activities now. But I think we really have to take that opportunity to expand where we can and try to get folks up for enjoying the open space that we have.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, that is a nice advantage that you have, is fewer crowds and really unparalleled economic access that many people are not familiar with. I think that there is a competitive edge to that, it's just kind of a double-edged sword, because if you're too vocal about, like, oh, come to Ski Cooper, if you can't go to Vale, then you're going to be in the exact same position as everyone else is, trying to maintain that distance. So I just think, I mean, that's tricky with outdoor rec, is trying to figure out where is that balance between saying, like, hey, we have more space, our trails are less trafficked, like, check out this single track, or this hiking trail, or whatever it is, to try to get people to kind of come to the community. But I think it's also, I mean, not to, this will sound cold and overly capitalistic, but like, if they're just going to drive up from Denver and ride a bike trail and leave, and they don't spend any money, it doesn't really do you a lot of good for them to come. So I think it's thinking about how, if you're going to go to the effort of attracting people to your unique open-space environment, how does that end up being at an advantage to the community? So what is the opportunity there to spend dollars in a local context? But I agree with you, I think that there, I mean, you have a lot of nice things going for just your size and your scale, and being a little bit more under the radar than some of your neighboring communities, for sure.
Janine, that's a really great idea. Janine, put in the chat, maybe we can utilize a reservation system to maximize investment when visiting, and you can purchase a vacation package that includes lodging and food. Those are definitely ideas that we can talk about on Thursday in our recovery group meeting, definitely. I think that's a really great idea.
Thank you for your thoughts, Jessica.
You're very welcome. I'm happy to join you guys if there's anything that... Yeah, no, happy to. If there's anything that we can provide you guys with respect to data, I know Mark Palatil is also on the call, he works with businesses, very specifically locally, but let us know how we can be helpful. So anything related to jobs or unemployment data or economic information, if we don't have it, we can work with some of our partners to help you guys get what you need to make the right plan moving forward.
Jessica, would there be, do you have the ability maybe to share the slides with us?
Oh, for sure, yeah. Is it all right if I, can I just email them to Janine?
Yeah, that'd be great, Janine, and then if you can email them internally to us, that'd be awesome.
Sure. So if employers are hearing that their employees don't want to come back to work because they're making so much on unemployment, that additional amount will end, end of July?
Yeah, and it is so, a condition of receiving unemployment is that you accept a suitable offer for work. Obviously, there's some debate about what constitutes suitability. There is, on CDLE's website, a place for employers to report someone who refuses to return to work. We have been cautioning employers to be a little bit careful about that, because if they report someone, it'll shut down the claim immediately while it gets investigated. There are some legitimate reasons that somebody might not want to return to work right now, and it's possible that they haven't disclosed them. So maybe they do have a health condition that makes them uniquely at risk. If they're caring for or living with someone who has a health condition that makes them uniquely at risk, that would be grounds. If they're caring for children, because there's no childcare options available, there's kind of a list of criteria that justify somebody's ability to return an offer or refuse an offer to return to work. It's not always just the money, but it might also just be the money, because the reality is, even if somebody was, $600 a week is $15 an hour, and that's just the add-on payment. When you put somebody's UI claim on top of that, there's a decent chance that they're making more money unemployed than they were employed. That was by design, so Congress set it up that way. But it does create kind of a natural tension between businesses that are trying to bring people back on, and workers that are, for whatever reason, feeling like they don't want to go back. So it's complicated, for sure, and we get a lot of questions from both businesses and from employees who are wondering, do I have to go, or what do I do if somebody refuses? And yeah, it's not a great dynamic, for sure. But that extra $600 is over in two months. And at that point, when people just have their regular unemployment to live off of, my guess is that, I mean, regular unemployment doesn't pay you what you were making previously, it pays about 55% of what you were making previously. So there will be much more incentive for people to return after August 1st.
Okay.
I have another question, again. I just want to be clear, Jessica, are you saying that, sorry, can you hear me okay?
I can hear you, yeah.
Okay. Are you saying that, because at the recovery group meetings, we've talked about kind of that case management and then developing, the Main Street Committee is probably taking kind of a head, a lead role in developing those business advocates. So will the local folks here with the Workforce Center be able to plug in and assist and be that direct kind of assistance to navigate, like you said, the programs and them ending and any new regulations that are being put in place for businesses? How can that work with those advocates, or just having business owners give the office a call, your office a call?
Yeah, I would, yeah. They can, I mean, they can call the office in Leadville, or they can reach out to Mark directly, and I don't, Mark, if you want to put your work cell phone in the chat for everyone, that might be helpful. But employers specifically should reach out to Mark with any questions that they have. So the office, thanks, Mark. So the, the office, thanks, Mark, the staff in the office work more with job seekers, so, you know, an individual who might be losing their unemployment, but I would say, like, for, you know, larger issues or understanding kind of, like, broad sweeping changes that are happening to unemployment or with employers, Mark would be the best person to help for you guys. And I know that he's happy to be involved however you all think is useful, so if that means joining a weekly meeting, you know, we're, he'll, we'll make it happen, whatever feels like it's most helpful.
Thanks for your contact information, Mark. Does anybody else have any questions at this point for Jessica or Mark before, before we finish up today?
This is Lori, I'm the adjourned director here on the county. You had mentioned something briefly about an 85% estimated increase in unemployment premium, but I think you were alluding to private sector, how is that going to affect us as a county for government sector?
Yeah, I, I think I heard that it was, though, correct me if I'm wrong, because it was a little muffled in my phone. So the government is not a premium-paying for when it comes to unemployment insurance, government has to pay claims out directly. What happened with the CARES Act is that normally you're responsible for 100% of the unemployment claim. Right now, it's 50% of the cost of the unemployment claim, but all governments are what's called direct reimbursing. So the increase in premiums doesn't have any bearing on the county. Did that answer the question?
It does, thank you.
Okay, sure.
Does anybody else have any questions? Commissioner Mudge, Commissioner Glenn, do you have any further questions?
No, thank you so much.
All right.
Yeah, I have nothing.
No? All right. Wonderful. Let's see here, so Jessica, Mark, I don't think anybody else has any questions. Thank you so much for taking time to present to us, we really appreciate it. It's very helpful information.
You are very welcome.
Janine, when you get those slides, if you'll pass those on, it would be really helpful for us to maybe take some of that information to present in our recovery meeting on Thursday and talk through some of that, that piece on Thursday, that'd be really helpful, I Does anybody else have anything that they'd like to discuss today here before we adjourn this afternoon? Tomorrow, we will have the mayor join us to talk about some maintenance in the summertime with the city and some collaboration there, and so we'll see you guys all back here tomorrow at 1:00 PM. If anybody has any, anything else, feel free to email or contact me, and we can put you on the list of things to talk about. So we'll see you guys tomorrow at 1:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, guys, take care.